Welcome to the Tuesday, September 21st, 2021 meeting of the Ann Arbor City Planning Commission. This meeting is being held electronically to protect public health and safety due to the COVID-19 virus and to comply with orders issued by the Governor, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and/or the Washtenaw County Health Department. We intend to conduct this meeting similarly to an in-person meeting, however, please be patient if there are technical issues. To speak during public comment opportunities, you'll be able to speak through the webinar link or by phone, depending on your method of access to this meeting and the devices that you have available to you. Both the phone number and the web link are available on the published agenda. For phone access tonight, please call 877-853-5247 and then enter our meeting ID, which is 977-6634-1226. This information is also available on the published agenda in the Public Notices section of the city website, and it's on the broadcast of this meeting on CTN, Channel 16, AT&amp;T Channel 99, and online at A2Gov.org/watchCTN, where you'll select Government Channel. Item two on the agenda is the roll call. Mr. Leonard, will you please assist us in that?
Of course. Commissioner Mills?
Present in Ann Arbor.
Commissioner Gibran?
Here in Ann Arbor.
Commissioner Solvay?
Here from Ann Arbor.
Commissioner Abrams? Commissioner Hammer Schmidt?
Here in Ann Arbor.
Commissioner Dish?
Here in Ann Arbor.
Commissioner Lee?
Here in Ann Arbor.
Commissioner Clark? Commissioner White?
Here in Ann Arbor.
Excellent. Item three is approval of the agenda. May I have Commissioner move to approve the agenda? Moved by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Dish. Is there any discussion of the agenda? All in favor, 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 raise your hand or say yes. That is all hands. So it, the motion carries. Item four is the minutes of the previous meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 8th, 2021 meeting? Moved by Commissioner Gibran, seconded by Commissioner Hammer Schmidt. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise a hand or say yes. That's all hands now. All right, the motion carries. Item five are all of the reports. Let's start with Councilmember Dish, if you have a report.
Just one thing, and that is that the ordinance to remove or the ordinance change to remove warehousing and indoor storage in C2B districts passed on first reading unanimously without even a Twitter of comment.
Very good. Mr. Leonard, anything else to report? And then Commissioner Gibran will be next.
I have no report this evening.
All right, Commissioner Gibran, do you have anything else?
Yeah, for DDA, just a bunch of different things. It's a whole group that comes in from different organizations, and it's always a great forum for hearing what different things happening. And so a couple of things that are kind of tangentially related. Let's see, that there is a, I don't know if people have been following the fact that there's a social district now that's been zoned downtown, where you can like carry drinks and things like that. So that's kind of important in terms of, you know, how we're thinking about buildings coming in. The other big one is that the bus station on Fuller was rejected for grants. And so we are pretty much now set with the one down on depot. And so I know we've had a few developments in that area. It's not that the city has decided we're doing depot. It's more that we were deciding between the two, and the Fuller one got rejected. So by default, likely, I, you know, I don't know that there's like a certain direction on that, but that's, you know, the only two I think that were looked at in any kind of serious way. And, you know, we've had some, we've had some developments down in that area. This is what I heard from another city council person. So, so anyway, that, you know, has an impact on what we're looking at down in that area. Um, let's see, I think the other piece was that a division is going to have a two-way protected bike lane on it that's coming. And I think there may be a curb there as part of that. And then there's been some, some things like issues around maintenance in some of these. And so the divider things may be different in the winter time, things like that for plowing that we should just kind of know about. And then the other thing is, I know many of us are bikers, I'm just going to put this out there, is that the buses are having a really hard time turning at Fifth Ave onto William because the bikes are out of our green box. We're too far forward. And so I, just a reminder to all of us watching or that are participating in this meeting, stay in our green box as we come up to intersections because it makes it really difficult for, you know, all those turning rates, I have all been worked out, and they've set it where it needs to be. And so we need to stay, we need to stay in our, stay in our lanes. So just a friendly reminder to be able to do that. We also got a big presentation on the affordable housing piece from Jennifer Hall and looking at the plans, you know, as things are moving forward. Nothing that's terribly different than what we looked at before, but we've been in close contact with those projects as they, as they move through. So that's it. Thanks.
Very good. Are there any other committee liaisons that have anything to report out? All right, seeing none, I'll move on to item six, which is our first opportunity for public comment. This is an opportunity for persons to speak for up to three minutes about an issue that is not is not listed as a public hearing on this agenda. So tonight, there'll be two dedicated public hearings, one for 2040 and 2060 West Stadium Boulevard, and the other for 1300 South Maple Road, the Grace Bible Church. If you wish to address the planning commission on any other matters, now is the appropriate time. To speak, you can press star nine if you're listening by phone, or if you've joined us through the web link, you can use the raise hand feature, which should be right below our pictures. For phone access, if you're watching us right now and want to dial in, the dial-in number is 877-853-5247, and our meeting ID is 977-6634-1226. Mr. Leonard will select those who have raised their hands, calling on you by the last three digits of your telephone number if you've called in, or by your name if you've joined us through the web link. In either case, you should hear an automated announcement that the host is allowing you to speak. And when speaking, please move to a quiet area and mute any background sounds so that we can hear you clearly. Please also state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. And if you've joined us by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or if you've joined through Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature.
You're getting so good at that introduction, yet there are nobody taking you up on that.
All right, then we will move on. There's another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. But first, we'll move on to the next item, which is seven public hearings for the next business meeting.
Sorry, I'm, sorry about that. Yes, I have one new public hearing scheduled for the October it is 3874 Research Park Drive Site Plan for City Council Approval. It's a proposal to demolish the existing building and construct a 130,000 square foot research office building on this RE zone site. Five lots are proposed to be combined, the development site totaling 16.9 acres.
Very good. The next item is eight A. We're in unfinished business, and this is the 2040 to 2060 West Stadium Boulevard Site Plan for City Council Approval. This item was proposed to be postponed. Is that still true, Mr. Leonard?
That's correct.
We will open the public hearing if anyone's called in and would like to provide, there's no petition, no presentations. We'll just go right to the public hearing.
Yeah, so just a quick update, as you are aware, the petitioner had a proposal to the working session. We're still determining their next steps based on the feedback from Matt's, our recommendation and consultation in terms of postponement of the items until November 16th, our regular planning.
All right, so without further ado, then I will open the public hearing. So this is an opportunity to speak for up to three minutes about the proposed development at West 2040 and 2060 West Stadium, the special exception use and site plan. If you wish to address planning commission about this item, please use the raised hand feature if you're viewing through the web link. If you're watching us and want to dial in, the phone number is 877-853-5247, and our meeting ID is 977-6634-1226. Per usual, city staff will select callers who have raised their hand, using, calling on you by the last three digits of your telephone number, or by your name if you join through Zoom. You'll hear an automated announcement that the host is allowing you to speak. Please move to a quiet area and mute any background sounds so we can hear you clearly. Please also state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. And hopefully that was long enough to allow for the TV delay.
Again, as lyrically poetic as you were, I see no indication of
All right, so we will move on. I'm going to read the motion. We're going to move it. And then what the staff recommendation is, is that somebody moves postponement. So the motion reads, the Ann Arbor City Planning Commission post, oh, the motion is actually the postponement, never mind. I get to just read the postponement. So the Ann Arbor City Planning Commission postpones further discussion and consideration of 2040 and 2060 West Stadium to the November 16th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. Moved by Commissioner Solvay, seconded by Commissioner Lee. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. That is all of the hands, so the motion carries. We will see the petitioner in two months. Onto new business. Nine A is 1300 South Maple Road, Grace Bible Church Site Plan for City Council Approval. And I see the Hollywood Squares moving, so Mr. Leonard is promoting the petitioner to make a presentation for up to 10 minutes. And then I see Mr. Kowalski Square, so he'll be providing the staff presentation for our public hearing.
Will you have the petitioner present?
Yes, yes, good evening. I'm going to share my screen. All right. Good evening, Planning Commission. Thank you so much for hearing our project this evening. My name is Jason Van Der Inn. I work for Naderbell. We are the civil engineers, surveyors, landscape architects for this project. Our office is located at 3037 Miller Road in the city of Ann Arbor. I am joined tonight by my colleague Brandon Chaney, also with Naderbell, and Reagan Sims, and he is a representative from Grace Bible Church. Before I get started on the, you know, the site plan presentation, I just wanted to give a brief history of Grace Bible Church in Ann Arbor. Grace Bible Church has been part of the Ann Arbor community for nearly a century. From the mid-1940s until 1970, their congregation occupied the building located at 100 North State Street in downtown Ann Arbor. In the early 1950s, Grace Bible Church began purchasing property along Maple Road, and by 1965, they had purchased all the remaining property, basically where our site plan that we're presenting to you today is located. In 1960, construction began on their new building, and by 1970, they had moved into their new facility that is currently located at 1300 South Maple. Over the next 45 years, not a lot changed on the site or, or with the building. It basically remained the same until 2017, when they constructed a new entryway or foyer that improved circulation around the front of the church building and provided a much-needed gathering space for people to use as they came in and out of the building. As part of this project, several other improvements and upgrades were made to the building, including updates to the sanctuary, renovations to the bathrooms, you know, improving ADA access, and fire suppression was also added to the majority of the existing building. And that brings us to tonight and to our request that's before you this evening for our site plan. This is a rendering of our proposed site plan, and there are three main components that I want to just touch on tonight. The first of which is what we are calling the Family Center. It is a 30,800 square foot addition located off of the south side of the proposed building. So if you can see my cursor, this is the existing building here. The addition they did in 2017 is here. This is the proposed Family Center Edition. The second major item that I want to touch on is parking. There are 107 proposed parking spaces that are shown here just west of the Family Center Edition. And the third thing is the Sanctuary Expansion, which is infill, there's, there's two existing courtyards on the north and south side of the sanctuary, which is right here, the existing sanctuary. And there is a proposal to infill those courtyards to provide additional seating in the sanctuary. This site plan contains various other important elements. There's several that are worth noting. Increase, increase site access to the south through two driveways, here and here, and ultimately to the shared drive that will outlet to, or, you know, that will connect to Pauline and Maple. This is Maple Road, Pauline. There's a signalized intersection there. Currently, there's only one access point to the site. These two additional drives will greatly improve access. We have a shared driveway agreement or access agreement with this Midtown project to the south. So this will greatly improve the traffic circulation around the site. Another important feature to note is that we are proposing a sidewalk connection, pedestrian connection from the South Maple Public Sidewalk along the north driveway to the existing building. Currently, there is no pedestrian connection. People that come or walk to this church have to walk up the driveway. And we are also providing pedestrian access through the Midtown site, through this shared ingress-degress to a sidewalk here that would give you access to the Family Center Edition. And then I think lastly, I just mentioned that we are proposing stormwater management facilities. This will be a shared use detention system. It will actually be shared between the Midtown project and the Grace Bible Church project, but it is located on the Grace Bible Church project. This is a overall floor plan of the proposed Family Center Edition. Important elements include a proposed gymnasium, a full-size gymnasium, youth program space. This serves the middle school and high school, and then children's classrooms for nursery all the way through fifth grade, located in this area. There's also church offices, storage, several common areas for gathering, an indoor play area, and a main, the main entry for this Family Center Edition is actually to the west, out to the west parking area, it would be accessed here. But there are also internal connections to the existing building. There are existing hallways in this existing building that would be extended. So when they actually, when they planned this original church building, they, they had a plan to expand it to the south. So it does make a lot of sense that these corridors line up. This is a bird-dive view of the proposed Family Center looking toward the northwest. This gives you an idea of the size and scale of the addition in relation to the existing church. This is the existing sanctuary, the addition they did in 2017. These are existing offices and classrooms. This is the proposed Family Center Edition, the gymnasium. It is the highest point in the proposed addition. This is at 29 and a half feet. This lower section here is where all the classrooms would be. And then the raised section that runs down the center is the entry to the west would be here. And then this is the kind of the corridor that kind of leads down the middle of the indoor play area. There are windows proposed along, just below the roofline to allow in natural light. This is a rendering of the west entry to the proposed Family Center Building, kind of looking to the southeast. You can see the gymnasium in the background. Full-height windows are proposed within this vestigial area, just to allow natural light to flood into the space. Stepping through the main entry, this is an internal view of the center corridor, I guess, looking kind of toward the east, towards South Maple. The proposed design allows for maximum natural light and flow throughout the space. This entry was designed to mirror the entry that was done on the front of the church in the 2007 edition, just to kind of tie everything together. The next major component of the site plan is the 107 additional parking spaces that are proposed to the southwest of the proposed Family Center Building. The existing site currently has 232 parking spaces. There's kind of three separate lots, if you will. A lot here north of our driveway. This is Hanson Nature Area. And I think Matt noted in his planning report that we are working on an agreement with the city to allow, you know, this, this to be used for people to park that want access to the Hanson Nature Area. You know, and then there's another fairly large parking lot here, and then around the back of the existing facility, the proposed 107 spaces are all located in this area. I think it's important to note that these parking spaces are proposed to be built over two phases. So there's 38 parking spaces in phase one. It basically includes these two parking fields here, and then 69 additional parking spaces in phase two. The church feels that the proposed parking spaces are needed not only to meet the existing congregation, but to, the needs of the existing congregation, but also to meet the needs of the proposed Sanctuary Edition that we're proposing. We're going to be adding seats. And it's important, too, that there are parking spaces adjacent to the Family Center Building. And then the last thing I just want to touch on is the Sanctuary Expansion. I want to get through these slides and show you what this looks like. This addition allows the church to continue to use and expand this existing sanctuary without necessitating the construction of a new facility. So we're re, we're utilizing this facility that exists today and expanding into some courtyards that, you know, are underutilized. Several studies were completed to ensure that the new expansion was feasible and that it would work with the existing structure. Expansion will provide increased seating capacity as well as enhanced access to the sanctuary through larger aisles along the sides and additional access points. The church is also proposing to upgrade many components within the existing building. HVAC, HVAC system is part of this project. This will greatly improve the existing building's efficiency. Many of the existing HVAC components are from our original old oilers and things. So this is a view from the stage, looking back. You can see the expanded areas here. I'm almost done. And this is a view from the back of the Sanctuary Expansion. You can see we're still maintaining some of the courtyard, allowing natural light to see the stage up here, just to give you a view of how it would look from the back. That's all we have. We're here to answer any questions you may have about the project. We look forward to receiving recommendations for site plan approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kowalski?
Hey, good evening, everybody. This is a good job of kind of summarizing of the nature of the project and the scope of it. I just really wanted to kind of touch on a couple of highlights, issues from my report. Real, well, one issue that was noted in the staff report, I did want to point out, the special exception use, because many of you are aware, we have had special exceptions in the past for churches. This did have one already granted in the past, and this does, the expansion does fit within the parameters of the previously issued special exceptions, which is why they did not require another one at this time. Parking. I know that parking was, was a concern of staff, or staff did mention some to the petitioner regarding the number of parking. As you can see kind of in the report, as noted, that the parking does exceed what is, would be typically required for a church of that size. However, there are some kind of mitigating circumstances within that. Typically, those parking calculations were developed with the idea of allowing on-street parking, allow, in addition, it says right in the code, use of public parking within, I believe, a thousand feet of the facility. And then again, obviously, the on-street parking, but neither one of those options are currently available at this site. There is no on-street parking on Pauline, and there is no public parking really kind of anywhere near the site. So that was one, again, a note that we had pointed out to the petitioner regarding a concern of staff in the additional pervious surface and that. Regarding pervious surface and stormwater detention, that is being combined, that the detention base that's shown on the plan does kind of currently exist in the form, they're, they're expanding it. This is a project that's under the jurisdiction of the Washtenaw County Water Resources Commissioner. So they are, they're working towards, they have a couple more steps. And so basically, these are shared detention bases with the adjacent project to the South Midtown Apartment Complex. And so basically, these are shared detention bases with the adjacent project to the south midtown apartment complex. Touching back on parking again, a major note was regarding the EV parking, the electrical vehicle parking requirements. The petitioner is requesting a variance of what they would be required based on the amount of required spaces they have on the site, not the total amount they provide, but based on the amount of required parking, it would be eighty spaces. So the petitioner is requesting a variance of seventy spaces, so they would be installing ten spaces on the site. That petition, if it was actually taken tonight by the planning commission, it is scheduled for the zoning board of appeals tomorrow night. However, if it is postponed, then obviously the zoning board of appeals action would be postponed. Staff, again, did go back and forth in deliberations with this and with the petitioner. But really, the feeling was that, you know, because the intent of the electrical vehicle is both for the current as well as to kind of help future proof some of these sites, while all these spaces may not be needed at this time. However, the amount of spaces that they're installing in the proposed parking lot, a hundred and seven, does exceed the amount that they would be required for, which would be eighty of these spaces. They're not touching the other parking lots. And within the proposed parking lot, they are doing the buyer retention islands as required by code. Previously, some of the front parking lots, when there's a previous site plan approved, they had modifications because of the existing landscape within those islands. And they're not modifying those at this time. But, sorry, and then again, touching, looking back on the EV parking. I mean, staff, again, did feel, did support the provision of just ten spaces. We do feel that they should try to provide the maximum, given that they are installing a rather large new parking lot. One other note as well that the petitioner did touch on, there is a small encroachment of parkland by the existing parking lot in the, it's kind of the northeast section, I think, there. And that exists as far back as we can look at area photos. And parks, and had no issue with it, again, it's been existing. They have worked out, they've continued over the years, allowed people to use that parking area for Hanson Park, the nature area, as well as there's a small active park in the front there. So at this time, our legal attorney's office is just working on a kind of reciprocal license agreement that continues to allow that. It's a very small encroachment, but it is something that we would want to address going forward. Grace Bible has indicated they have no problems with that and are fully in favor of any agreement in that area. And again, so that concludes my presentation. Again, staff is recommending approval though, however contingent. Oh, there is the photometric plan, which is again, something that we had pointed out later to the petitioner because the recent changes approved by city council. So their plan, again, going forward to city council ultimately would have to comply with those. Again, that indicated that that's a mission at all, so that would be something that we would get turned into later time. The other condition on that, again, is either a provision of the required amount of EV parking or a variance being granted by the zoning board of appeals, which again, that would be, that is on the schedule tomorrow night, depending on maybe some action here tonight. So that does conclude my presentation at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is the public hearing. So this is an opportunity for persons to speak for up to three minutes about the proposed thirteen-hundred South Maple site plan. If you wish to address the planning commission on this item and you've joined us via phone, please press star nine. If you have joined through the web link, you can use the raise hand feature, which is at the bottom of your screen. Or if you are watching us and want to call in now, the number is eight-seven-seven-eight-five-three-five-two-four-seven, and the meeting ID is nine-seven-seven-sixty-six-thirty-four-twelve-twenty-six. Mr. Leonard will call on select callers that have raised their hand, either calling on you by the last three digits of your telephone number or the name that you've used to join via Zoom. You'll hear an automated announcement when the host is allowing you to speak. Please move to a quiet area and mute any background sound so that we can hear you clearly. And please also state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. See no one. All right, that was probably long enough, but I'll read the proposed motion. And if somebody joins, just thank you, Mr. Leonard. All right, the proposed motion is the Annover City Planning Commission hereby recommends that the mayor and city council approve the Grace Bible Church site plan that's at thirteen-hundred South Maple Road, subject to the following conditions. One, submission of a revised code compliant photometric plan. And two, submission of a revised site plan reflecting either the provision of twenty-three EV installed vehicle parking spaces, twenty-three EV-ready vehicle parking spaces, and thirty-four EV-capable spaces, or the number of EV parking spaces required if any variance is granted by the zoning board of appeals. Could I have a commissioner move that? Moved by Commissioner Sovey, seconded by Commissioner Dish. Any discussion? Who wants to kick off the discussion? Commissioner Dish.
I just want to make sure that I am completely following the logic of the parking and the EV parking and the staff requirement. So the EV total of eighty, a mix of all the usuals, is calculated based on the number of required spaces, which is not a limit, it's a minimum, which is two-twenty-three. It is not calculated based on their total number of spaces, but nor is it calculated based solely on the spaces they propose to add.
That's correct, it's based on the required.
Cool, all right. So, and they want to reduce by seventy, which is, I don't know what percent of eighty, but it's a lot, the requirement. And the building and the parking lot are going to result in the removal of four landmark trees. And they're going to plant a bunch, which is nice, I'm really glad. But I am feeling a little, yeah, I, I like staff's recommendation that they provide the EV parking. And of course, I'm always willing to be talked out of this. But, but this is a lot, this is a lot of parking. It's a huge impervious surface. I wish, I'm sorry, that a total of four landmark trees have to go and that, you know, some number of those are going because of parking. I understand the constraints on the site, so I'm understanding why this parking is necessary. But it does feel like a project that assumes the modes of transportation that we're familiar with now, which is personal transportation involving gas car vehicles. And so I'm, I'm sort of, I'm squirming, I wish we could ask them to do less parking. I think if they want to do less EV, they should do less parking spaces. And if they want to do all this many parking spaces, I'd like to see all this many EV. And I already see other thoughts, so I'm going to stop talking.
Commissioner Sovey?
How many parking spaces is required based on how many are proposed to go for EV? If not eighty, it's more than eighty, right? Based on the total number of constructed parking spaces? Because it's not the minimum, it's more than eighty, correct?
Oh, yes, yes, correct. I said it would be.
No?
Wait, I misunderstood the question, I see Brett shaking his head. I thought you said.
Matt, why don't you walk, just walk through the what parking is required? Was the minimum required? And what would the EV spaces of that be required based on what calculations?
Yes, there's two-hundred-and-twenty-three spaces that are required. And so the EV parking calculation is based on that two-twenty-three, not the total amount that's being provided on the site. So when you break that out, it is, I don't know, if I have the breakdown of EV. It's fifteen percent that are EV-capable, but I don't think I actually have that number broken out here.
You do, tell me to read it.
Yeah, it's. Twenty-three installed.
Yeah, you got it.
Twenty-three installed, yes, thank you. Twenty-three installed, twenty-three ready, and the thirty-four would be EV-capable. And again, those are just based on the required amount of parking for the site, not based on what's provided.
Right, so we should, we would be requiring twenty-three plus twenty-three plus thirty-four is eighty, but based on the amount of parking proposed, they're actually required to do more than EV? Or no EV is required for anything above required?
Correct, it's not required for above that, yeah, I'm sorry, I just understood.
Cool, no, that's good. My take, like, I'm really kind of cold with the EV stuff, especially based on certain uses. But when I actually look at the site and the sidewalk going in and the shared parking by the park and the amount of apartments going in that aren't within the parking areas, I'd love to see the EV parking, if it gets built, in the park parking lot, the shared park parking lot. Because if we're talking about a religious use, assuming Sunday, there's a lot of the time that those EV spaces are probably underutilized that the neighborhood could figure out how to utilize. Putting them in the back of a lot doesn't feel like, oh, welcoming space for off-site people. I know this, this is just like me thinking out loud, none of this is what's required. If the project gets to the point, you know, that they're expected, you're already kind of laying sidewalk and things, it's a perfect way to lay conduit right underneath it to do it, right? I think the double benefit then is how that EV parking can really service some of the apartments in the area that don't have any EV parking as an opportunity. So that's me kind of just thinking through it a little bit in terms of why I feel even better about EV if and how others could use it. And most charging stations are charged, like, they're not just like free plug and play, right? Like, you still have to put in, you know, payment information sort of thing. So this is just my comments on that, like, I'll leave it to the ZBA for any sort of variance, but I think at this table, you know, I'd say eighty is what I'd be looking for. My other question is, can anybody tell me about this pavilion that doesn't really show up in elevation or plan? Is that just like a covered outdoor pavilion for rain for the soccer fields?
Yes, that's, yep, correct, sorry, I pulled from my camera. Yes, so, sorry, I should have touched on that. So it is just a open-sided covered pavilion. They use those fields, they rent those fields out to local soccer clubs, they have soccer camps there. And right now, there's no, there's no structure there in case it rains or if they need shelter of some kind, so.
Cool, I guess, yeah, tell me about, about, it's not, right, like, this isn't like weekly school stuff. This is mainly, you know, Sunday school or whatnot. But for like the sports activities, do they imagine they might have like little leagues and things just like for basketball and for soccer that would get, would utilize the building more so during the week then?
Yes, and I might let Reagan chime in on that. But yes, I think the goal of this family center is for outreach. There's, like you mentioned, there's a lot of communities adjacent to the site, you know, that could utilize a facility with the gymnasium. That is the intent. Reagan, if you want to add something, feel free to.
Hi, thank you all for letting me here. Yeah, our plan is to utilize this facility for as much of the community connection side as we can. So that primarily includes, we have the new Avalon project that just went in just to the north of us, and some of these other groups, we've been building connections with them as we've been here on the site for many years now, with Pine Lake and some of those other cooperatives and stuff that are around here, in hopes that we can provide some of those opportunities. We're not providing a school or anything like that, that's not something that's part of our future, any of that stuff. But in terms of utilizing things like the gymnasium, and we have a, one of the old, we found this on Facebook Marketplace, basketball goals that's out there right now. And from time to time, we'll have some kids come over and use that. And that's one of the things that kind of sparked our, like, can we provide something like a gymnasium facility that's a little bit more accessible for the community in that? And the idea of the pavilion specifically, at least you're going, the soccer field was the same thing, providing something that allows teams to gather in case of rain or gather in terms of, you know, you're doing some sort of rotating thing with their teams on the field and replaces the sun and stuff, was the idea behind that.
I guess, one more question like on that, like, because, like, I love to see spaces utilized more, right? Than like one, two days a week. So I am just kind of curious to know, like, hours of operation for this addition? Like, how do you see community members being able to engage with it?
It's a good question. For the most part, we'd be looking at outside of business hours, because that's when a lot of the church hours actually happen, right? So whether we're talking Sunday morning, which is our primary time, or post-five o'clock, you know, when we're able to do that type of stuff. So almost none of our church programming happens for, you know, the probably the forty-to-fifty-hour window that happens around regular business hours. And so most of that would happen below. So it'd be the idea of how can we open up this portion of the facility for folks after school? How can we open it in non-peak times, like summer, some of those things? Even potentially down the road, looking into what would it look like for the church to utilize the gym as a place for, you know, providing, you know, when there are interruptions in like school lunch programs and stuff like that, letting, letting there be a space on the west side where we can kind of use that, this facility and everything that's connected to it for those type of things.
Excellent, okay, that really helps. Warming shelters is another really good use of that gym for, hopefully, it's a week or two in the winter as well. No other questions right now, thanks.
Other commissioners have questions or feedback? Commissioner Weich?
The first question is for staff, Mr. Kowalski. How much of the encroachment is into the parkland? You said a little bit, and I looked at the map and I couldn't get a sense of, like, are we talking ten linear feet? Like, or there's some.
Actually, Jason.
Can I hear, yeah, can I hear?
Yes, I had the number offhand, but I'd have to look at the planner if he's got the plan handy.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if this is the best plan or not. But you can see, I don't know if you can see this on your screen, I don't think I can zoom in, it's just on PowerPoint. But this is the parking lot and question, this is the property line where my cursor is. You can see the encroachment is this piece right here. I would say it's probably three or four feet on the south side. And then as you go north, it kind of tapers back. But it kind of cuts, you know, the driveway in half here, so maybe, maybe it's more like four or five feet. So yeah, that's, this is the portion that we're talking about for encroachment.
So I wanted to just echo Commissioner Sovey's comment of putting the EV parking in that area that accesses the park. So as you all consider or respond to whatever the zoning appeals for decides, putting it there, I think, would maximize its use, especially since, according to your plans, you're not planning to host a daycare center in the site. And so it sounds like it'll largely just be Sunday worship services and potential evening programming. So the site's going to sit empty, or the parking lot's going to sit empty for the majority of the work week. And that's a significant downside, especially as I looked at all of the parking. And the other thing I wanted to understand, and I don't know if this is staff or the petitioner, is the midtown condominiums have pulled their permits since that plan has been approved, unless they have, and I didn't, I couldn't find it in the city sites. So the petitioner noted that there are going to be continuations through the property, through that development, but that development isn't, hasn't moved forward at all. So how, so that was, it was stated, like, this is a better way to access the building because we're going to come through this development. But that development is actually not moving forward as of right now, like, no permits. Well, I guess there was one permit that was approved till 2022, but no other permits, it looked like. So it didn't seem like there was any activity on the site. So I just wanted to understand how they were thinking about it. And I know they were positioning, or they were positioning the parking lot in, I think, three phases. And that that latter parking lot would be in that third phase. And so I wasn't sure if the timing of that was what you were hoping to achieve. So I'll start with staff, and Mr. Leonard muted himself. And if the petitioner had anything, I'd be open to that. And then I have one more question.
I'll start. So the residential development adjacent has not started construction activities, as we accurately reflected. They are in the process.
We accurately reflected, um, they are in the process of actually, um, amending their site plan right now. They're in the administrative amendment process to making some slight modifications to grading and some, they're, um, proposing some phasing lines. I think part of that probably might be to reflect the order of construction in that regard. Um, that aside, um, they would have the ability, if, for example, this project were to move forward, they would have the ability to construct that driveway. If this site meant alive on that driveway, it would in fact have to occur. And, and that's like in the circumstance where the driveway gets built sort of us, I guess, adjacent to or as a component to the Grace Bible Church development as opposed to the apartments, um, that ultimate, um, consequence would likely fall on the residential property adjacent. Where if that driveway was constructed in the manner on that site plan for the benefit, shared benefit of this site, um, the site could proceed. But then if they didn't proceed with the development of that adjacent residential, it is possible then that that could expire and they might have to go through the site plan review process again. Um, we measure sort of progress by a couple measures. You have to start within a certain timeframe. You can extend that to the administrative process and you have to make steady progress towards completion. So, um, those are my initial thoughts. Um, I know that they are actively working. We are actually, I just checked the status of the administrative review and, um, some final engineering comments are due later this week. So, um, that's, again, it doesn't necessarily translate to instant permits being pulled, but they seem to be submitting documents toward that.
If, if I could add just to that, um, I, I agree with everything Brett said. I, I mean, they have cleared the site. They, there were two houses on the property. They demolished those, um, while their solar erosion control is in place. They closed down that property, so they own it outright. Um, so all our communications with them is that they're proceeding forward. And they're, they're quite a bit ahead of us. So even though they're going through administrative amendment, um, you know, we still have some, we have the city council needing to go through amendment. So we, we don't anticipate starting this project. Um, you know, at this point, it's probably looking like the spring. Um, so I feel like they're going to be, uh, far enough ahead of us that, you know, and we've been coordinating with them all along the way. Obviously, we have a shared base and charity agreement agreements and all those things. So we have a good relationship with them. We're, we're confident they're going to move forward.
Um, as I was looking at the site plan, there was a note under the site summary, um, that, uh, looked at the traffic and I wondered how, uh, the petitioner arrived at the point six nine trips per occupied seat calculation, which I think is, um, a huge part of the articulation for the need for the parking. So, um, you're only proposing four hundred and twenty seats in the sanctuary even with the addition, unless I misunderstood. And so I'm, I'm just trying to ascertain the, sort of that calculus for the parking, especially since we're seeing such a significant amount of, um, parking on the site. I know you're still within the zoning, uh, so there's no, I think, EDC concerns, but I, I just wanted to understand uh, how the petitioner arrived at that or if that's a staff provided calculus, uh, to help them, uh, stay within the EDC.
So I may need Reagan to, um, join, join in on this question, but, um, we, we did cons, uh, hire a traffic consultant. Jason Benjamin did, uh, traffic, did, did the traffic study. They did actual traffic counts, um, during Sunday mornings to see how many actual cars came in and out of the site. To, to your point of how they exactly calculated how many cars per seat, I do not know. Um, I believe the existing sanctuary has four hundred seats and then we're adding an additional. Reagan, help me out if you can, but I, I don't have it in front of me, but, um, yeah.
Yeah, the, um, the current sanctuary facility has approximately four hundred seats. Um, and the queues make it a little bit different than actual chairs, um, to calculate kind of the number of people who can sit there, um, particularly in a COVID world. Um, but the, the expanded, the expansion of a little bit over three thousand square feet that goes out of the way, um, is a total of about two hundred usable seats in addition to that. So I think that total number is somewhere in the ballpark of six hundred is what would happen after the, after the approach. The, those, those numbers aren't exactly dead on, but, um, but we're kind of for our calculations, um, we're looking at about a fifty percent increase, um, in terms of our, our existing facility. If that answers your question.
Uh, yes, it does. Uh, Mr. Leonard has his hand up. I don't know if he should talk before I ask my next question.
I was just gonna, I'll, I'll see if I can find it, but, um, typically, um, I can't speak for them and I'll see if it's reflected in any technical reviews. Typically, the trip generation is actually, comes from, um, uh, the Institute of Traffic Safety Engineers, ITS. Um, it's a nationally adopted, um, basically kind of guide to trip generation that we typically impose and require our submitters to abide by. And that trip generation is based on building use type. Um, and so you put in what the building is used for and it generates sort of a rate of trip generation. But, um, I would anticipate that that's where that number came from, because that's just how that was done. But I'll see if I can clarify that.
Thanks. Um, I, again, this is a question for a city or, or for staff or for the petitioner, um, uh, during the public, um, collection period where they met with the neighbors, a neighbor indicated concerns about the sidewalk. And I want to ensure that that had been remedied and if it wasn't, if it was planning to be, uh, with the site. Um, I do bike, um, along that sidewalk, um, a number of times and there are some. So I know the city is involved in getting everybody to fix their sidewalks and all of that. So there's like a collision of all those things. But I think the, the neighbors were mostly concerned about water runoff, uh, because there's a hill that, um, comes all the way down to Pauline. And then without there being good drainage at that point, um, there can be freezing if it's raining. Uh, it can also cause other things. And as, even as my kids and I have biked along that corridor, uh, you, you get a lot of speed. And then if you come into that sort of space and there's scrap or things like that, you, one can wipe out. So, um, I heard the petitioner talk about how they were going to bring, uh, the public sidewalk, uh, into the property to access it. I heard the petitioner talk about going up the driveway, uh, to access the light. But I didn't, uh, hear how the sidewalk that is running along, I think it's the south side of the property. I'm really bad ordinarily, uh, when I'm not looking at the map. Um, and so if someone could just address the sidewalk. And then that's all I have for now, but I might have another question in a minute.
Yes, that's a good question. So, um, as part of the midtown project improvements, they are basically reconstructing the, or constructing a new driveway approach at the intersection of Pauline. So I think that's, that's the area that's usually the biggest issue because it's kind of at the low point in the hill. So water would sit between, would get stuck, you know, kind of between the grass area between the curb and the sidewalk. But that is all getting rebuilt as part of their project. So I think that will, uh, fix most of the problems. There still is some, um, you know, grass area from the Grace Bible Church site that slopes to the east towards South Maple because the church sits up on a hill. Um, so, you know, I think, I think that's something we just got to keep on top of. Um, I don't know that we can fix the, fix all the grading, um, if you will. I, I think fixing the drainage at the bottom, where all collected before is a big improvement. But, um, yeah, I mean, I understand, I understand the concern. Um, and I don't know if there's a way to fix all of it along our whole frontage. But, um, we are fixing it at the bottom where the water would collect before.
Yeah, and if, I, I could just add briefly to that, but I did, in walking the site, I was posting, so I, I see and reflecting that comment. It did see the majority of that i- issue where you could see like dirt on the side. You could see there was a little bit of water. It is, um, well, I mean, technically it's just off the site now because that's the midtown site, but it's right at that intersection. But that is where, and right now there's, again, like previously it was, even though it was, it's vegetated and things, there was a lot of sheet flow off there, you know, up, went off of the hill. So when that's constructed, that will definitely be fixed because they're not allowed to shut off there. What we did do as well as, um, refer, I just had, uh, our soil erosion guy just referred to when he's out there. He was gonna, uh, this, actually I'll follow up with him because he said he did go out there again, um, to expect that to make sure that there wasn't any, um, like excessive runoff in that location or anything else like that. So it, most of that issue, walking the other sidewalk in front of the Grace Bible itself, it, it seemed okay, but again, it was on a nice day. It wasn't raining and there was no snow obviously. So, but I think that may address part of your questions.
Okay, I remember my last question. Is it okay for me to ask now? Okay, so in phase three, that's the last parking lot that you are asked adding. Um, and this may be a question for staff. Is there a way for us to do parking in that phase three on, because that's grass now? So they would be clearing that space and then putting an asphalt parking lot? Is there a way to, um, uh, put in a grass parking lot?
No, CO doesn't allow, uh, it requires it to be paved. It doesn't even allow, um.
Okay. That, that was my question. Thank you.
Mr. Leonard, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I was wrong. So let me explain how the trip generation was generated. Um, they, uh, calculated, um, they actually measured generation based on the use of the church. Um, it was done during COVID. So even though the current church, um, I'm quoting from the traffic impact study right now. The church currently has four hundred, only a hundred and sixty-eight seats for occupied during the period. Therefore, um, what, what they did is they measured the ingress and egress of all the trips from multiple service times. Um, and figured out the total trips based on the number of seats and occupants. So, um, when aggregating all of those ingress and egress trips over to the services, um, they generated that point six nine trips per seat. And so they use that then, that actual data as a factor projecting forward across the expansion of the sanctuary. So it was not strictly, as I mentioned, uh, a, a, a ratio from, uh, manual. They actually, um, uh, used actual, uh, data utilization of their trips onsite and then projected that same rate to the expanded, uh, capacity.
Other questions, comments? Commissioner Hammerstein?
Thank you. I want to make sure that I understand the shared driveway that kind of runs up to Pauline. Um, so if that midtown, so midtown in theory is building this complex, it is building that road, right? So the two driveways are going to feed into that road and midtown is pulling it? Yes. So if something were to happen in midtown, didn't notice, I don't know that I understood based on what you were saying, Mr. Leonard, or maybe it was Mr. Kwasi. Is Midtown still on the hook to build that connection? Is something, was it just like go disastrously wrong with that project? Or would we just be left with driveways to nowhere?
So if, if midtown were to construct, I want to make sure I understand your question. Midtown could only construct that driveway because they have some arrangement with Grace Bible Church for that access. If they did that, they could construct that portion, basically terminate it, um, and they could stop. And then that, that would be the requirements if, if presumably Grace Bible Church plan goes through the approval process and is approved based on reliance upon that drive. Alternatively, Grace Bible, if for some reason Midtown wasn't, wasn't moving forward at the same pace through agreement, Grace Bible Church then could elect to construct that drive to finish their development. To be clear though, if we're approving a site plan that relies upon that, one of those two things will have to happen. That would not have the impact of necessitating that Midtown absolutely moved forward with their development. But as you heard from, from, from all of my observations and, um, Mr. Benjamin, um, we anticipate that that will happen. So, um, so the short of it is that driveway is anticipated to be constructed part of the residential. We anticipate that that's going to happen in a time frame which could be used to the benefit of these connections for Grace Bible. If for some reason that didn't happen, it is, that would still be required if for some reason the Grace Bible moved forward. We wouldn't allow occupancy of that strictly with the promise that that happens at some time in the future. And that is part of the access to the site. It would have to be realized prior to the completion of the Grace Bible site.
So, yeah, I think so. So somebody has to build this.
Yeah.
Right. That's all. Um. I think this might be a question for Mr. Cent. I'm just curious, before COVID, uh, what was your occupancy like? I'm just trying, I guess, I'll say why I'm asking this question. There's a lot of parking that's being put in. It's hard, and I understand that you've probably done your due diligence. It's just hard for me to imagine that all of these spots are going to be filled. So I guess I just want to hear a little bit about your congregation, your, your occupancy, your, you know, projections for filling these two hundred queues once people feel more comfortable post-COVID.
Absolutely. Um, so some of it was already delineated in terms of kind of how much of our parking has to happen specifically in our site because not having access to those public parking type situations in this thing. So that, that stuff was already kind of mentioned. Um, the, the main reason is that, and some of it is connected to the way that we're building this project. Um, this church has been on the site for, as was, was mentioned for a while. Um, but we've never had pedestrian access directly, um, to the church. And it's something we're trying to fix as a part of this because that speaks volumes to a community, I think, honestly. If, if we can be honest about making sure that, that there's, there's a doorway regardless of how someone chooses to come, right? Um, but I think some of that is reflected by the population of our church, um, for the most part, which is, we are primarily a commuter church, um, in a sense. So we have, um, I mean, as far as Mile and Chelsea and some of those things as well as primarily Celine, um, kind of downtown Inarbor student body area. Um, and, um, and Dexter and Celine and kind of those, those parts as well. So as a result, we have a lot of young families. Um, so giving you an idea kind of, of, of where we are in terms of, um, the population. We were, um, utilizing our facility for three services, which is mentioned in the traffic study, um, in, in those states where they're. Um, we were filling two of those services to capacity, um, in prior to COVID. Um, we're running, I mean, again, because of COVID distancing, some of those, all those things in, in order to, you know, our, our numbers are very different, um, at the moment. But what was largely included was that on a given Sunday, somewhere between ten and twenty percent, um, of those were underneath fifth grade. So a lot of families, a lot of young families. So if you're saying we have a four hundred person vertigo auditorium, right? And we're having somewhere around eight hundred to a thousand people on, on a full Sunday pre-COVID. We're looking at somewhere between a hundred and two hundred of, of those, maybe even more depending on the week, in fifth grade and down. So one of the reasons why the, the parking has been so necessitated as well as the, the expansion of the family center specifically is because all of our kids ministry spaces pre-COVID were being overutilized. Um, we've estimated somewhere between ten and thirty percent based on the capacities of those rooms. So all that is to say, we have that we need this outlet and in this larger space. So parking a lot of commuting, I don't know if that commuter kind of conversation answers what you're looking for. Um, but, but yeah, that's the main reason why this was there. I mean, we've been utilizing even in, in, you know, um, permeable space and stuff like that on our site to try to get all the cars here. Um, and that, you know, that's even with some car, we have a pretty substantial carpool system that we try to utilize to bring students in from the university. Um, and even with those things, um, it's the battle of, you know, volunteers are here taking spaces for all three services and some of those type of things. Um, again, I don't, I don't know if that kind of gives you a clearer picture, but.
That does, that does. Thank you. So you've been, you've been parking off of the normal parking lot just to meet the needs of the people coming to your services?
That's, that's correct. Um, and in, in places like, um, I mean, I don't have the, the space for me, but this is like asking people who have trucks to, you know, pull into, to situations like that where they could, could get out, which, um, is, is not a great situation when it comes to the joys. I'm a, I'm a Florida boy originally and so the joys of the snow, the world is still very new to me. And, uh, yeah, that's not exactly something that helps us a lot when, when our, our lovely winters go around here in Inarbor.
Okay, my last question, and maybe this is just also sort of thinking out loud, since you're doing the parking and phasing, I guess here's the question. Is this, maybe this is a staff or a Mr. Benjamin question. Do we have to clear, like, for that whole parking lot, does the whole entire site need to be cleared even though the parking is? Do we have to clear, like, for that whole parking lot, does the whole entire site need to be cleared even though the parking is being built in two phases? Does it need to initially all be? And I don't know exactly what's, what's where.
Yeah, I, I can answer that. So, um, unfortunately, a lot of the storm sewer that is going to be servicing the proposed building and, um, you know, the, this parking is located between our proposed building and the storm water retention system. And a lot of the storms pipe and utilities crosses through this area to make sure that we can pick up that runoff and then direct it there. That would be difficult to, uh, preserve, you know. I mean, I think there may be some things we can do, but it would be difficult to preserve that entire area till we, till we got to that phase.
I'm just sort of thinking like, again, you know, like, who knows when COVID is going to end, like, who knows? Like, it's, it's hard to know if people are going to be doing things in the same manner that they did things two years ago. So I'm just sort of thinking like, if the parking is going to be built in phases anyway, like, is there an opportunity to sort of hold that as pristine as it can be, given the other constraints and like make a decision, you know, whenever, before phase three, if like the parking is really needed. And I, the decision here, I don't necessarily think is predicated on that answer. It's just something that I was thinking of. Like, maybe this third phase of parking, although I do, I think it does, like, include that driveway. It was just sort of like a, like a checking in.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, I mean, I, I agree with you. So we, um, it's one of our response, um, our responses to planning review, though, with Matt. He asked that question too. And, and I think the church responded that, you know, say we build the family center in the phase one parking. I mean, they're certainly going to evaluate where they're at with parking before they go and have to spend the money to build the, the additional sixty-eight spaces, I think, that are in phase three. So they're definitely going to look at that. They, they've been looking at the parking in the site since, you know, two thousand fifteen. I think they counted every Sunday. They would count it to keep track of like, oh, we only have one spot left, you know? They don't want to build any more parking than they need. Um, but this is, this is based on all that data they have. This is what they came up with as far as, you know, what this would make it work. So I think they're willing to evaluate it after the family center gets constructed and the phase one parking is done. And if it's not necessary, I think they're willing to, if we would need to go through an amendment or whatever, um, you know, to not have to build that future parking. I think that's something maybe they would be willing to do.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, I think that is it for now, except I guess to say that this is really making me think about parking maximums and wanting to have that discussion again. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Clark.
I have a question for my own reference. Does the city have any requirements about features to mitigate heat island effects? I just noticed that, um, with the new apartments that are being built on that side of the road, um, just a quick math, bare minimum space, unless I'm way off base here. About, so the apartments next door with about a hundred parking spaces constructed this year, um, is about a hundred, uh, eighteen thousand square feet of new impermeable surface. Um, plus this one, and again, this is not even counting for those lanes, right? I just, uh, bottom line. Um, and then, yeah, so something like twenty-four thousand square feet of new impermeable surface on, on that stretch of road. So I just wanted to kind of think about, um, and again, math is really quick, so don't know. That was just kind of a quick and dirty estimate. Um, I just wanted to kind of think about if there are, or if that's something we can kind of put on our to list in the future one day or wish list, I guess, would be heat island mitigation features.
No, I mean, we don't have any direct programs that, that would, I guess, correct a key guy with that fact. I mean, I, I know that part of the idea when we revised landscape code years ago was to, you know, to decrease the number of spaces without landscape island. The buyer retention goals were part of the thinking behind that. But Mr. Leonard may have a little bit more sustainability thinking of any thoughts, but I'm not aware of any other mitigation factors we have for heat island effects right now.
I would agree. There's, you'll not, you won't find anything in the code that specifically addresses it, but I think that part of our natural features, um, identification, mitigation goes towards that as, as, uh, um, Matt indicated. Um, specifically, I think our parking area is where we now require, um, vegetation and landscape areas um, at a certain ratio of appropriate surface. Um, and of course, um, you know, whenever we have the opportunity for sites like this to move them from nonexistent or inadequate to more functional stormwater, um, I think that can help with that. Not, I think it's related to heat island, but it's not, it's not directly. It's sort of a, an effect probably that we're managing a little bit more. But the short is, no, you won't find a heat, um, heat island section of the code. I do think that some of our regulations tend to help address it and try to mitigate it.
Mr. Good Randall?
I'm really glad you brought that up, Commissioner Clark, um, because it's something that I think that, um, we don't address any of that in our code in terms of how things are oriented. It's only about like what fills the, the void that's left in terms of the islands. And I would really, I think that's one of those like small nuanced things that we might be able to shift in the code that we actually have control over, um, where we might think about, um, instead of just having this even distribution and letting the petitioner kind of put them where they want by code, but also just where they want to because they have mitigation and all that kind of thing. It's really thinking about south side and west side and really thinking about those things more carefully, I think, is a real opportunity that, uh, we potentially have to be able to chip away at some of these things. So obviously not, not for this project, um, but I would, I think that that's an opportunity that we have to, to really try to do something about that. Um, and I guess I would just encourage the petitioner through their mitigation. Um, I don't see anything on the west side over here, um, in terms of, uh, I see quite a bit on the south. And I think some of that is, is, uh, the mitigation trees that you have as well. But, um, it's an opportunity, I think, to be able to put some things on the west side, to be able to, uh, deal with some of that hot sun. And, and frankly, like, people just like to park where they should. Uh, we all kind of crave that. So, um, again, it may not be for this round, but I think that that's something that would, uh, that would be a good thing for us to think about for our future that, you know, isn't huge kind of, you know, knock the energy down by a huge monster, things like that. It's like every little bit helps. And I think it would be great for us to start thinking about, um, how, you know, sun plays on these dirt surfaces that we have and the impact that that has, um, on our city. So I would hope that, that we can maybe tackle that one, uh, at some point within some of our ordinances to be able to think about fine tuning some of that, to be able to make it more sensitive to shading on pavement. Um, so I'm glad you brought that up. Um, I would just say in terms of the project, things seem good to me. I, I, but I don't support producing the amount of, of electric vehicle. I, I just don't see a reason to. And, um, and I think it's just, I think it's where things are going and I think we all need to do our part. So, uh, I don't, I don't support that part of the, the range, but it, it seems like things are well thought out in other ways and I support the project in general.
All right. Um, any others? All right. So I'm, I, uh, agree with everything that you all said. I'm curious about how the, the number of EV spots at ten, how the petitioner arrived at that?
Yeah, I can answer that. Um, we provided this as a part of kind of our ZDA application, um, for, for that, that meeting as well. Um, essentially, we're kind of following the footprints of some of the earlier variances that were granted on this project, specifically the, the St. Francis project, um, which is a similar, um, project that's been a nonprofit and in similar type of use for the facility. Um, so that's kind of how we arrived at that calculus. As I understand their calculus, um, it was kind of based on less the, the number of overall parking spots that are co-required, but more the number of, of used parking spots because this type of lot is a kind of like a high-capacity but low-usage rate lot because of the way in which we utilize it, um, on Sunday morning, primarily in terms of being full. And then for the rest of the week, it's much smaller. So our number was, was based off the number of employees, um, that the church has. So that's how we arrived at that ten, um, number down from the eighty number was, was trying to follow kind of in the footsteps of some of those, those variances, St. Francis went through several rounds in, in, in that process with the ZDA. It's going to make sure that, you know, we can at least start the process from another perspective, right? And kind of be a little further down the road by proposing, um, kind of what we saw is in line with our facilities, connective stairs. So that's, that's where we came to that number, um, was the idea of who is, when we look at how many, um, spots are being utilized, we disperse how our lot is used over the course of the entire week versus just kind of that high watermark of the Sunday morning. That's, that's kind of where we came to that number.
Okay. And this is a question for staff, which is, this to me strikes me as a chicken and egg problem. Like, ZBA can't vote on this until we send them something, but I don't feel like, in my mind, at the very minimum, the multipliers that are in the code, which is ten percent being ready, ten percent being, um, installed and fifteen percent being capable, those would apply to what is being built. And so I arrive at thirty-eight spots minimum. And that's, that would still require a variance, but I can't, I can't fathom this having fewer than thirty-eight spots. So I feel uncomfortable voting on a site plan that doesn't show thirty-eight spots. Um. But even if it does show thirty-eight spots, my understanding is that it, the great, the variance, how does that work? Like, they can't vote on the variance without that. So.
Yeah, so, um, I recognize that. And so what, um, Matt and I tried to do is to provide you with the language that would, um, we, we hundred percent language that would recognize that there is a decision relative to this development that is out of your hands. Uh, the zoning board of appeals is an independent body. They are going to apply their standards and they're going to come to a decision to either grant a, grant the variance or not. Um, uh, I would, you know, I, um, I can't speak for the zoning board of appeals. Um, I will, I would just point out that I think that this petition is quite different than the previous one that was referenced. Um, the, the distinctions between the two projects are a project that was, um, the, the proposed improvements to the other church was in addition, that necessitated no change to the parking lot. Um, this, um, is coming with, uh, as, as we've noted, a pretty substantial new and expansion of the parking lot. Um, I think the intention of the ordinance is just that when parking is going in, what is the opportunity to future-proof this to the cha, the changing trends of transportation? Um, so, um, I guess I would push back a little bit on your concerns. You, you know, if you're not comfortable, certainly you're prerogated. If you feel like you need more information, but, um, but the, the decision of the zoning board of appeals is, is going to be impactful one way or another. If no, um, variance is granted, then the site plan is going to have to reflect the required spaces of eighty. If a variance is granted, um, and the site plan is revised to meet that, it is going to meet the standards of the code, um, in the same. So, um, so at that point, if, if for some reason the zoning board of appeals granted that variance and you, you were not comfortable until you do that, I would just point out that at that point, the standard is not going to be eighty. It's going to be whatever the variance was granted for those numbers of spaces. So, um, that's why we proposed the motion as it, as it, as this. Um. And I guess I'm happy to answer any other questions.
So channeling, I mean, what I want to say is, uh, I mean, we have no, there's no, you staff are our link with the ZBA. I'm pointing out again, like, that when there's an opening, somebody ought to volunteer.
And I would, I would just share that, uh, just one more point to that. You know, we have, we've shared the same sort of analysis that we shared with the planning commissioner and the staff report and the zoning board of field staff report as well. So, um, we are being consistent, um, in our communication sort of with our staff observations. But just like, you know, you are applying your standards, the zoning board of appeals are going to apply their standards for decision one way or another.
Okay. I mean, I, so the language that you have here is certainly stronger, um, uh, you know, suggests going all the way up to the eighty that the code would require. Um, I guess, like, where I sit and for what it's worth, if there's any ZBA members listening, like, having that multiplier, at least to anything that's new, is really, really important to me. Like, I just don't, uh, it, I cannot fathom putting in new parking where you don't at least have that. And the last time that we were in a similar situation where EV parking came into play, um, and our discussion was, I mean, that, that, that site plan that we saw was at least having those multipliers applied to the new stuff. And so that's where I'm, I'm uncomfortable, like, uh, es- especially building parking that may only be used, you know, according to the rationale, but will only be used for a small portion of the week to, if you're go, like, part of the reason that we have this in here is to make sure that, that any of the, the parking, any new parking that we have here is future-proofed. And so this makes me really uncomfortable. So actually, I will say that I, I don't plan to support this unless it can show, in my mind, at least those thirty-eight chargers because I, or thirty-eight spots that at minimum, like, I could, I could vote in favor of this if it had at least that, knowing that ZBA could decide somewhere between thirty-eight and eighty, but I can't support it with only ten. So. Um, Commissioner, give Randall, your hand was still up, and I think I never saw it go down. Okay. So Commissioner White.
Um, this is for staff. Uh, are we able to send a memo to, um, the ZDA, uh, with the concerns that the chair has just articulated? I thought there was a way for us to communicate, or do we do that in the actual motion? Where we revise the motion to fit what we are hoping to achieve?
Um, you could, you, you could send a communication. I would, um, um, I would, if, if that was a desire, it would be something that I, that the commission should take action on, um, because it needs to reflect the, the commission as a body. Um, I guess I would just, you know, I, I would just, um, frame it as, um, you know, the zoning board of appeals, I think carefully, it does apply the standards just like you do. And so I would, you know, I would just sort of keep in the back of your mind the kind of communication you think would be helpful from the zoning board of appeals um, to a decision that you're making as to how you'd want to share with them. But yes, you, you could do that.
Cause it, it feels like even by the petitioner's articulation is they granted this exception. We're hoping they'll grant our exceptions as well. And so now there's kind of this issue around, like, is a precedent being set? So if you come in with this kind of site plan, you could expect that this is going to happen. And then that undermines the, the very, um, goal of, um, these initiatives. So short of asking the zoning board, the, the, the zoning board of appeals to what we want, we do want to say no, we don't want a precedent set where, um, these kinds of sites that come through are, are shifting. So we're trying to be respectful to the point that you just made. And then my other, um, uh, comment was back to the petitioner. I didn't note it, uh, in any of the elevation or any of the site plan that I reviewed that you are considering solar. And I just wondered why you're not, um, especially with all of this new construction, um, considering any alternative energy sources, either, uh, geothermal or solar.
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, so we are considering, um, we actually have some bit processes you're working through right now with Harvest Solar. Um, and some of the companies that are connected to this have a connection to our elders, is connected to, to that, that company directly. Um, so we're looking at that, but some of it because of the resources that are required on the front side, um, which is true for both the EV standard and the, the solar side. Some of those things are contingent on kind of what are we going to be able to do in terms of the overall finances, um, to do that. But we're absolutely in the process of looking into, to solar, um, and some of those things. I have an email in my inbox from, um, one of the reps over there who is, is asking for some of the same plans you guys received to look at kind of what, um, what square footage will be available, will be taken into account, rooftop units, and all those type of things um, as part of the facility that's being proposed, um, and how we can kind of utilize this. Yeah, we are, we are looking to that, um, at the moment because we are open to, to this alternative energy conversation.
One of the things, um, I guess that's sometimes happens is that I've made known kind of where, how I plan to vote. I, I wonder if the petitioner has any interest in, um, showing thirty-eight spots on here or committing to thirty-eight spots. Otherwise, uh, yeah, let me just leave it there.
If you mind, I'll actually jump in at this point. So the plans that you actually have before you
If you don't mind, I'll actually jump in at this point, so the plans that you actually have before you right now actually meet all the current EV standards. As, as displayed, we actually have, I believe it is. Um, twenty-three EV charge stations that charge two spaces apiece. So the plans before you actually do meet the requirements.
Can staff clarify then how, we're like, um, what the notation is or what the, what, how that works with the second condition? If they are shown, which I didn't zoom in, I guess, well enough.
Yeah, it would be, the, the, the plan would be modified, I guess, accordingly, based on ZBA action. Um, and that wouldn't be, that would be, that would be something I'm gonna necessitate another planning commission reviews. And it approved tonight, that showing on there, then whatever the ZBA grants, that's what the plan would essentially need to reflect, whether it's going forward. With all the compliance spaces or if the variance is granted, whatever that variance may be, the plans can be amended to, to fix that.
Could, because of where, there was some discussion about where the preferred location for some of those chargers is, and because I don't have, um. Want to dig through it right now, could the petitioner share that site plan showing those locations?
Sure, uh.
I'll do, I'll do Brandon.
Little Jason, okay.
And Commissioner Dish, I see your hand.
All right.
Actually, you can go, go to C two oh six.
I don't, I don't have a plan, Brandon, I, or maybe I do have that sheet though.
It's on C two oh six, and they're in just the new parking lot.
They're in this location, right?
Yeah, with the ex- exception of ones that are north of your cursor, um, for one eighty-eight accessible EV charging space.
Yeah, right here, so there's one here and there are. Twenty-two here, so for a total of twenty-three.
Yes.
So what's required though, what's required is thirty, uh, is twenty-three installed. Twenty-three ready and thirty-four capable. So are those ready and capable also shown?
So the code defines for both ready and capable as actually a, a panel requirement for internal electrical. So that we know that those, those would be capable, um, and be ready, um, but those aren't denoted as specific spaces, that would be a flexible. Um, positioning for when we were to install any additional spaces, um, we, we haven't designated the specific spaces at this time.
Okay, I think capable and ready, particularly when it's a surface parking lot, i- includes the underground, it's the, the raceway as well. Um, so I think that there is, it's not just the panel.
Yeah, I can clarify that, the um, the EV install, this install charging units, EV ready has the raceway with the installed conductor lines. And then EV capable has raceway and capacity.
So again, I mean, I, I appreciate having the, the twenty-three here and shown and, and based on the conversation from colleagues earlier, like, this is. This is future-proofing what you're built, or partially future-proofing what you're building, um, but it doesn't get to that, that number that's currently in there. And so, uh, so what I'm hearing too, um, is that some additional things would need to happen, be shown on the plans in order, that's why that. That's the thing, it wasn't, uh, um, that second condition is on there. Um. Okay, uh, go ahead, um, actually, uh, if the petition wants to go, then Commissioner Dish.
Yeah, so you can't, I mean, um, we're showing the twenty-three that have to be installed, the other. Uh, twenty-three and thirty-four, I believe, are listed on our, on the cover sheet as being proposed. I mean, but those, those improvements, like the raceways and the conduits and the upgraded panel, I mean, those things aren't going to be developed until we do detailed design plans. I mean, there's really no way to show that on a site plan other than to denote it on the cover sheet, which is what we're doing. So I feel like, I feel like the plan, the ori- the original intent of the plan was to meet the ordinance. Intent of our meeting tomorrow at the ZBA is to request for variance, if we don't get the variance, then we're going back, we're going to meet the, you know, meet the intent of the ordinance.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Dish.
Yeah, I just, I'm not even sure if this is a question, but I did just want to follow up on Commissioner Sova's suggestion. Because to put, I don't, I, I know that you have a proposed sidewalk connection along the parking lot that you share with the nature area. But that's not going to be in the parking lot, and so in order to, if, I don't know, can EV capable? Be installed without ripping up that existing parking lot since there's going to be a proposed sidewalk extension? Or is that, yeah, Lisa, you, you suggested it, so you can answer it.
I'll just, like, you can run the conduit under the sidewalk, at some point, there's going to be some interaction with it that would require. More invasive construction, but like along the sidewalk, there then becomes a landscape area that I think would be ideal on the south side of that parking lot. To plug them in, you know, as, as a possibility, getting to the north side means you have to kind of like wrap around that parking lot to have all those stubs up. But again, this is me thinking out loud and kind of think, it's not something that. I'm like very fixed to, but again, when we think about Sunday versus the rest of the week and who could, you know, use these and that. Uh, the community knows that these are kind of community parking spaces instead of church parking spaces. I think that says a lot to who could utilize these more often, get a bang for your buck, um, in terms of putting them into.
Yeah, no, I am one hundred percent in favor of that suggestion, and I wasn't sure about the feasibility because of course, your day job is so different than mine. But I am all for this infrastructure, which is expensive, being, you know, as shareable as it possibly can be.
Any other comments? I'm still, I'm still of the mind that like, it's, it seems like there's not, um, I, I'm not comfortable with kind of where the, the plan is. In terms of moving forward, um, not having, not fully, like, having those details shown here. So I'm, I'm not comfortable supporting this, Commissioner White.
I just wanted to ask staff, um, is the petitioner correct that we wouldn't show on these plans the EV ready and the. Uh, EV capable and any notation on the plan, it's only in the cover letter?
Well, it's, it's on the cover of the plan as a petitioner, so it's required, and I would say that we have approved other plans. That have noted the realization of the number of ready and capable spaces, but not located them on the plan. Um, I do think the location of the charging installed is probably the most critical, but um. If, if that is, is current information to the commission, um, that's something that can be asked.
Any other questions or? Comments? All right, Mr. Leonard, I think we can vote. Oh, Commissioner White, voting stuck in before. Before I started.
Just, just in terms of what Mr. Leonard said around, if we wanted to make a communication to the ZBA, we had to take official action. So I didn't know if that needed to proceed the action on the site plan. So, um, if we could.
Whatever.
Clarity on that?
Yeah, I think.
Okay, so we can, we can either approve or reject this, and I guess if we rejected it, we wouldn't need to send the notes to ZBA because that. Would force the petitioner to do revisions of some sort, okay, all right, I just wanted to understand the order of things.
And one of the communications, I'll, I'll, people have been like kind of brainstorming out loud today, so I'm going to brainstorm out loud too, or think out loud, um. Wouldn't it be appropriate, Mr. Leonard, to, in that condition, to say, uh, in the second condition or the number of EV parking spaces required by any. If any variance is granted by the zoning board of appeals. So long as that number exceeds thirty-eight spaces, like that's what, that's what, in my mind, that's the minimum. Um, and so that's what I want to communicate to them, is that like, I really, but I again, don't want to kind of second guess their thing. Would that be an appropriate thing or should there be a separate communication?
I think it should be a separate communication because I don't, that come, it's, it suggests that you have the authority to somehow. Narrow the scope of a variance that could or couldn't be granted for other, and it's simply not within the planning commission's purview. That is, that is the decision of the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
So, um, I, I don't think it would be appropriate to include in the motion. Um, but if, um, if, again, if you feel that you want that information of that decision prior. You can, you could wait until that action occurs, but again, the, at that point, I think that the result has happened. It's either granted or not, and, and if, and if, if any variance is granted, um, then. A plan would be presented back to you, I presume compliant with that.
Got it. Commissioner DeRandle.
So basically, if we vote for this, then we're essentially saying that it's, that it's the lower number. Is, is that what I'm, like, do we have, no, like, if we?
Your, your, what we, what we attempted to do with your motion is to communicate that. This site plan has to include all of the required EV parking, and it is, it is noted on the plan. Unless a variance is granted, then.
Okay.
And has to reflect that.
Okay.
Just to be, like, you know, uh, like in an extreme example, um, you could approve a site plan. The, a petitioner without any sort of premeditation could then subsequently seek a variance on that, on that. And then that could proceed to city council, altered from what you did, but still fully compliant with ordinance because of the granting of that variance. So I, I, I think that communication is the most appropriate, but again, I would. I would just add, I would suggest that you consider, you know. To some extent, it's, you know, their, their process, their, uh, uh, board trying to apply the same standards that you are. And so, um, I don't know what the outcome is, but again, as I, as I've indicated, I think this is a pretty different circumstance than the prior one.
Uh, okay, and that's actually helpful for me, so to be clear, they could do, they could have not told us, you could have not brought this information that they were going to seek a variance to us.
And in fact, the plan used to sort of reflects that in a way.
Yes, um. That changes my mind on this, other than to say that I will let my kids stay up way past their bedtime. So that we can vote on that communication, because I think that that's really important, um, Commissioner White.
So the thing that is confusing, Mr. Leonard, in what you're saying is, once it gets to council for final approval. The notation that council shows the vote of planning commission without the discussion that we had. So when they receive it, with the exception of, of, uh, council member Dish being there to speak, yeah, but I, she's actually not permitted, I don't think, to speak on behalf of the commission. Unless elected to do so by our bylaws, from what I understood. So, so it's absent of this, you know, hour and forty-two minute conversation. And if, if we pass it unanimously, then it appears as if we didn't actually have this, like, conversation around. This uh sort of piece, and so I'm just trying to understand. How that gets communicated in the best possible way. Uh, so that council isn't just seeing this and saying, okay, we're, you know, planning commission voted unanimously to accept this, who are we to change anything? They've already had a robust conversation, and we're like, but wait, we wanted to make these changes, but we couldn't because there's a board in the way. And we can't tell you what to do because you're independent too, and, and council has said they do not watch planning commission. So they are not aware, by their own admission, not a Commissioner Dish, of course, because she's here. And so anyway, I'm, I'm just, again, saying this out loud to try to help move us along so that we can get to the thing that I think we want to do, which is to communicate. That this is different because this is a newly constructed parking lot, various versus just a site. Changing the existing footprint, and we don't want to make it onerous on them just because they're changing the existing footprint. We want to say, this is a hundred-year development, it's a special use to start with, it's a church, it's either going to be a church, a daycare center, or a school. Or it's going to get torn down and rebuilt, and so we want to try to put some of this infrastructure in place when we have opportunity, and um, that's it.
Um, I'm gonna start with something that's gonna be very frustrating, I'm sure to all of you, is, um, that discussion doesn't matter. Um, communicating that to the city council doesn't really matter a lot, your, your task here is to determine if the site plan meets the ordinance of the city. The city council has the same job, is to determine if the site plan meets the ordinance of the city. Um, neither group has the ability to, um, add requirements that aren't housed in that. And the zoning board of appeals process is, is part of that process, and so that's why I think the communication is appropriate, you can share that. But, um, the, the process that you apply as to whether the site meets the UDC requirements and the process that the zoning board of appeals apply, applies to determine whether or not a variance is or isn't appropriate. Um, lay out the rules by which this will be measured against, and so, um, I would say that probably the, the. More important thing to communicate to council would be if by ordinance action, if this ordinance isn't doing what you want it to. Um, then we should change it, so, um, so. I, I don't mean to, you know, belittle, I know that, I think you're wrestling with the issue, but you're wrestling with that, those constraints is sort of similar, I think, to what we discussed a little bit in our working session. Um, our goal's broad, our task is more focused on the ordinance. Sorry, that was a real downer apparently.
Commissioner, um, Selay.
Don't worry, I'll be, I'll be a Marvin Downer, like, I would not support a communication, I don't want to set precedence that we're issuing communications with every vote. And this doesn't seem like very far off of every other decision we make and the bodies that it might move through for approval, so I would not support it at all.
Then I kind of want to have that discussion about communications now. Um. Commissioner DeRandle.
So when I look at the cover sheet though, I'm sorry for delivering all of this, I see like the number of spaces that we want on the cover sheet in the church. So what do we do with that if we're voting on this plan set? And not whether or not they're going for a variance?
Given the staff report, like, that's the, like, how, that's the thing.
Wasn't that able in the staff report?
Right, yeah.
You could, um, so first of all, my apologies, and my conversation, my review of this, I wasn't aware that the site plan included, I was under the impression that the site plan reflected those ten spaces. So, uh, my apologies for that, but what that means is, I think the motion is fine as it is, it identifies a condition that you have to comply with the form out. I think frankly, adding the condition is a bit of a statement unto itself that, you know, the expectation is to meet all of the spaces. But, um, you could, uh, strike those conditions, that condition, and simply, um, omit it. What that would mean is you'd be approving a site plan that is fully compliant, and they could proceed to the zoning board of appeals. They could be denied, and then the site plan would go forward to city council in its current form, they could go to the zoning board of appeals and they could be, uh, granted. And the site plan could be modified to reflect ten, uh, EV spaces as an example, and then that would proceed to city council fully compliant.
So the fact that they show it on the plan set means that they're compliant, it's just the variance is a, okay.
I, I think, um, maybe, and I, my apologies, maybe we made this worse, but. My apologies, maybe we made this worse, but, um, Matt, I spent a, a fair amount of time trying to sort of. Present what our consideration was with this. I, I felt like the last project that we considered, particularly Mill Creek Townhomes. Um, this seemed to be a big topic about what is the right, wrong, appropriate way, um, when we're, when we're expanding parking areas and. Um. And that project is seeking a variance as well. Um, so, um. I think all three of them are actually pretty different circumstances, but, um. Our intention was just to be forthright with the commission that they are seeking this, um, staff's perspective is. Um, that they can provide them, um, to meet the intention of the ordinance. And, um, that's why we included the image.
Yeah. And I would just say that just as a message to future petitioners that if your intent is to. Ask for the variance, then show it on the plans because it's just confusing the, the issue. To have it be kind of, it's like trying to do both ways, which seems disingenuous to me. Just commit one way or the other. If you believe you're gonna go it and go for it, then. Go for it. And if you're, if you're not, then that's the risk you take, you know, that's, that's, and so I think that's part of what is making this. Kind of more muddy and confusing.
And that's, that's probably as much as us as the pitcher, you know, us trying to figure out the best way to communicate when, when this arises. Um, so we can, we can follow that direction if that seems to resonate with.
Commissioner Hammer Schmidt. Can the ZBA say? No, we don't accept, can, can, no, we don't accept the ten, like we're denying that there is, but we put like kind of the discussion you had right now, like, but we will do it. For these hundred seventy spaces and you have to be thirty eight. Is it not like an all or nothing thing with the ZBA or? Is there a discussion point? Do you know that they could like deliberate and come up with a different number and then that come back to us? And no, I guess it wouldn't.
Yeah, it, um. It, it's a little less deliberation than planning commission, I would say, but yes, a petitioner could modify their application based on feedback they received from the zoning board of appeals. I'd also say that a parking variance is a little bit different set of standards than a typical variance, less, less robust. Than the typical variant standards. Um, so, um, that can happen. Um, you know, sometimes a petitioner will sort of frankly read the room and sense that they're a bit maybe far afield of what the zoning board of appeals thinks is appropriate. And they might, um, modify their proposal. So it does happen, but I would say the vast majority and of actions. Tend to be an up or down vote at that meeting.
Thanks. Other questions before we vote? Okay, Mr. Leonard.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammer Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Dish.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
We didn't hear that.
Oh, yes.
Now we did.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Mills.
Yes.
Commissioner DeRandle.
Yes.
I was curious now.
All right, we are on to item ten, public comment. This is an opportunity for persons to speak for up to three minutes. About any item of interest. Um, if you wish to address the planning commission at this time. Um, then we don't have anyone that is viewing, so you would have to call us. The number is eight seven seven eight five three five two four seven and enter meeting ID nine seven seven sixty six thirty four twelve twenty six. City staff will select callers that have raised their hand. If you're calling in, you press star nine on your phone. I see that we've had some people join through Zoom, so if you want to provide public comment now, you can use the raised hand function, um, on the bottom of your screen. And Mr. Leonard will select callers who have raised their hand calling on you either by the last three digits to your telephone number or by your name. You'll hear an automated announcement that the host is allowing you to speak and when speaking, please move to a quiet area and mute any background sounds so that we can hear you clearly. Please also state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Again, if you've joined us through Zoom and want to provide a public comment. You can, um, use the raised hand feature, which should be in the center of your screen underneath our pictures. All right. Seeing no hands, I will move on to item twelve, which is commission proposed business. Is there any? Go ahead, Commissioner Sullivan.
Um, I, I just like to look at maybe overflow parking ordinance along the parking max forms, um, once we get into it. Like the idea of gravel lot. Seems to be an interesting option when only used, you know, one day a week or something and what overflow parking. Might look like in other comparable, uh, cities versus just one type of parking. So just kind of adding that as a sub bullet to a lot of our parking discussion that might be coming up as one way to kind of look at it.
I would also propose that we, um, mark this. In our work plan and the parking discussion as yet another example, but the EV ordinance has to change because. If you are required to build three hundred spots. And you build six hundred, you have the same EV parking requirements and that's wrong. It should actually be reversed in my mind. Um. Uh, so, uh, I would like to make sure that we, and this I think is a good example of where that comes to be. I know that there was discussion of this before. I, I would like to propose that we do send a communication. Um, that actually goes to ZBA and to council. Highlighting the, um, the, the, some of the issues that we are seeing on the EV ordinance and some of the discussion, which is about. Um. Building, future proofing the current, uh, any new parking that we are adding to this city.
So, um, do you want to send a communication or do you want to send a modification?
I think in my mind, it's, um, uh, given the timeliness of, of this particular issue, I would like to send a communication just saying that this is something that's come up now. Multiple weeks and not maybe not in row, um, but that, that we're seeing, that we are anticipating, working on, um. Proposing changes to the EV ordinance, but in the meantime, should there be variances sought? Our approach has been about future proofing, that if you are building something new. That you should, that those, the multiplier ought to apply to what is new. My sense was that that idea of a multiplier at least applying to the new parking was something that was shared. Um. Uh. But that's, that's what in my mind would go into that communication, not telling ZBA what to do, but kind of our rationale behind it and also letting them know that we're looking at it. But in the meantime. We know how long it takes ordinance revisions to happen. And who knows how many variances could go. To ZBA in the interim. Commissioner Dish.
So I'm just, I'm just a tiny puzzled in that, um. So. In the previous one that we talked about, which was the intel housing. We did talk about applying the EV ordinance to the parking that was new. Um. In this case, we actually. Want the calculation of the EV ordinance to be on the total. Uh. You know, the, the required minimum number of spots. We actually don't want it to be on just what's new. You're specifying that because they've asked for a variance that's considerably lower than just what is new, right? But if we say that. We potentially could get less than what we all think is appropriate for this project. Given that it's already over providing parking. And I think our feeling is. You should, you know, and, and there's this public access parking lot. Our thinking is that more is actually appropriate here. It's a compact site. It's not like the other one that we looked at. So I just worry that that communication actually legitimates less than what we want, although it requires more than what they're asking for.
Yeah. I see that. I, I, I mean, we don't have to send anything and to Commissioner Sullivan's point earlier. I don't love the idea of sending communications, but we've had a robust discussion. A couple of weeks now and until our ordinance reflects that and deals with all of these potential. Different ways of thinking about that multiplier, I, I don't think that this is going to be the only variance that happens and we may not, we may well not know about it. Mr. Leonard.
I, I agree with you that I think we will have more conversations about it, but the same token. Um, I think in short order here, we are going to have. Results on, on three variance applications for three pretty different projects in that regard. And so I do think the EV ordinance, I think you're seeing these variance applications because it's a pretty impactful and it's a pretty costly add on to development in the city. And I, um, I, I. I guess I don't, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball where we end up, but I do think that. Giving some space for these decisions to come out, to see how they end up. Um, on these different scenarios will probably help. Us in that work going forward about how we want to. Adjust that ordinance to maybe get closer to the right balance of what we're looking for. Um, like I, I would just like in, in these circumstances, you know, the, the first one, I, I. That's not kind of what I envisioned as sort of the intent of the EV ordinance. The intent I thought was when we're building parking. Let's make sure we're future proofing it for this benefit and no parking was being built there, but it was a requirement. This one, I think is the other extreme. Building enough parking where enough of, to meet that requirement can be met. And I think the Mill Creek is somewhere in the middle. And so I, I guess I would just suggest that maybe it's okay for us to just. Recognize that this is evolving. It's probably going to involve in our eyes, we're probably going to see other scenarios among those three. Let's also see what happens with these applications to see if they are considered similarly or they're not by that board who does so. And then with the benefit of that. You know, we're, we're moving the ball forward. It's, it, I think what we're struggling with is how quickly are we going to move the ball forward towards this infrastructure? And so. I don't think waiting to see these early, um. Reactions and responses and deliberations by both you and the zoning board of appeal. It's a bad thing to see where we end up and. Move from there. So, um. Maybe that is, um, a, a small two cents as to sort of. Shying away from a communication to, to let the process work out in the way all of our structures are intended. And then let's learn from that and see what adjustments we want.
I, I consider that a friendly amendment to instead. Have the planning manager report back what happens at ZBA. Um. We're not gonna change this overnight anyway, so, okay. I'll take that. That's, that's proposed.
I feel like I'm just frustrating the planning commission all the time now, so I'm sorry.
We really, I sincerely appreciate all of the expertise that you bring to our commission. Thank you very much for guiding us.
All right.
All right, any others? Then we're on to item twelve, which is adjournments moved by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Hammer Schmidt. All those in favor, raise your hand. And Commissioner Dish is waving. We can't see Commissioner White. There's his hand too. All right. Unanimous. Have a good night.